Calling to order the city council of Cresco, Iowa for October 18th, 2021. Roll call?
Breno.
Present.
McCollum.
Present.
Fortune.
Here.
Fusca.
Yes.
Carmen.
Present. Act on the consent agenda, which includes one, approval of the agenda, two, approval of the claims, three, approval of the minutes from October 4th, 2021, four, approval of minutes from the October 4th, 2021 C I D, that's capital improvement programs work session, and five, approval of the special class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales, The Fat Teas Cafe LLC. I'll move.
Second.
Roll call?
Carmen.
Yes.
Fusca?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Breno?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Any staff reports, public works?
Yep, so Northway showed up would be, I believe, October 5th to do the water casing on wall three. They said it'll probably take them six to eight weeks to finish it. Hopefully, it's not any longer than that, being now we're only running out of wall four, so let's hope that one holds together. The Sultan Sand has been mixed up and put in the shed for the season. And just a reminder that the leaves from your yard need to be raked up and bagged up or taken out to the yard waste. Don't blow them out into the streets. We've had a few complaints on that. And then Perry Novak was here today to start the light, the stoplight pole replacement down there. They dug the hole and they poured the pad for the light pole. They'll be back in a week or so to redo the light pole itself and move it. And I'm actively working on the tree grant programs for this last year and for next year. I just wanted to throw it out there that if anybody wants any boulevard trees, please give your question now.
I think we'll get.
Hard to say, I think we have 15 so far. And last year, we only had 40 something, so I'd like to see more than that. All right. And that's all I have.
Well, and I'll just comment that people are trying to love their trees by putting mulch around them and making tree volcanoes, but that kills them. So, please don't do that. Police, let's see, Tim couldn't be here tonight. What it is to note and congratulate Sam Potiatus for his promotion to police sergeant. And then Tim said he was retesting again this week for one more position. So, we're making progress on that. Administration?
I wanted to remind you that Regional Health Services is having a dedication for the south campus tomorrow at 4:00 PM. And I don't know if Brandon was going to say this, but we were awarded a fitness center relief grant of $82,120, and that is for loss of revenue from COVID. And I talked to the theater commission, and they want to get a, they had talked earlier in the spring about getting a committee together, and now they're going to push getting it together, a committee to work on the same shop, if we're going to do fundraisers or revise the layout or anything. So, they're looking for two city council members, two from the theater commission and two from Cresco Community Theater. And then the six of those people will get together and then come to us with kind of a combined request and what they think they can do for fundraising or different ideas, and then see where we're sitting at that point. So, I don't know if two people, Alex, I know you're already on the theater, Laya is on, so I thought you maybe would be one of the.
I can move that.
And then would a second council member want to be on the committee?
I don't know.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Any committee updates?
We had a theater commission meeting last Monday. They, they're looking to do the Rocky Horror late night showing on 10:30. It would be at, I think it's 11 o'clock, or it's either 11 o'clock or 10:59. I have to go back and look at my notes, but.
10:30, isn't that Halloween?
Yeah.
11:59.
Yeah.
Just wanted to ask.
Oh.
She got the notes.
Jan, Jan's the step, she's got the notes. But 11:59 on 10:30, so that put us on to 10:31 for the, for the actual event. They are, they did contact another tuck pointing agency outside of, normally they use car tuck pointing, but car, there were some things that car can't do, so they contacted another tuck pointing company out of Rochester to come in because they're going to have to replace some bricks up towards the top of the theater building. They're also looking at window replacement on that. They were, they were already awarded $44,000 in the shutter venue grant through this, was it the state or was it the federal?
Well, state pass through. It's federal money.
And they actually were awarded an additional 22,000, so they're at 66,000 for shutter venue funds to help kind of offset the cost. But the money for that had to be allocated into projects that were planned or that were, that were halted because of the COVID-19.
And also for loss revenue.
Yeah. So, that's about it for that.
CIDC, Matt, but I forgot my notes, Jason. Were there any, anything you'd like to say about CIDC?
And your earth shaking?
Hmm? That was my question.
Yep.
Park Board, Matt, do you want to give us an update?
Yeah, sure. So, Michelle updated you guys on the grant we received. The only other thing I was going to bring to you guys' attention is the park board unanimously approved the decision to name the ball field at East Park Steve McCarville Memorial Field for Steve's outstanding service to the community and love of kids and adult activities, especially at East Park. So, I am currently putting together a little press release article to publish in the newspaper that should be completed later this week, kind of outlining the board's decision and how we arrived at this point, so the public is aware of, you know, what's been going on and why we got to this point. So, other than that, not a whole lot has been going on. The big news was the grant and then the East Park Ball Field, we, so.
Thanks very much, Brian.
Yep.
Jerry, do you want to tell us? We had a meeting last week in the airport.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I wasn't going to say.
What do we need here? What we did at the meeting? Okay, Rick Sovere is going to be the new representative.
Yeah, that's later in the council.
Yeah, I thought it was coming up later.
Okay, you can do that later.
I think most of your stuff is on the agenda later.
Okay, any other comments or any audience? I know Angela, you asked to speak.
I did, I already did. Stick up for me, hit it. I have six of those, so. And they're just pictures. Nate has seen them, so he knows what I'm talking about, but I felt like it would be better if you saw what I was talking about. So, I have been on a quest to get things cleaned up on Fourth Avenue since at least 2018, not before that. And every spring starts out the same way. I contact the public works director, which I had been in contact with Rod before he retired, and then Nate got stuck with me. But there's always an issue to the 412, Fourth Avenue West. So, I come in every April and then all summer, you get sick of me, and then I go away for the winter, but I come back. And so, Nate and I, I contacted him in April. I came in, sat down, kind of filled him in on what had been the problems in the past and what I wanted kind of fixed, if I could. So, over the next few months, I shared pictures with him and, you know, would bother him and ask what was being done. And finally, in July, I felt like Nate had done all he could do. You know, it was just waiting on other things. So, that's when I came to the first council meeting, which was July 19th, or yes, July 19th. And the day after that meeting, I did get an email from Michelle that said letters were sent to both 412 and 414 on May 20th by the attorney, and the deadline for them to comply was July 14th. And the listed items for 412 were cleaned up in accordance to the letter, but 414 didn't comply, and the attorney will request a court hearing on the property, which hasn't happened. On Friday, August 20th, which was a whole month later, I sent an email to Michelle and Nate, wondering when the court hearing was or was going to be and what actions were going to be taken and when I could expect to see something happen. And I, Nate did respond on Monday, the 23rd, and he said he wasn't aware of any court date yet, but he would contact the attorney that day to see where the letter stood and what kind of timeframe, you know, he was looking at. And then I never heard anymore about a court date. So, then I came back to the September 8th meeting to find out when something would be done and discussed the fact that new issues were then popping up. And I was told, you know, I needed to make a formal complaint. So, the next day, I did email Nate regarding other nuisance vehicles that were in the neighborhood that hadn't moved. And there was a trailer that was parked that didn't have a wheel. I mean, the whole tire was off. Didn't have a license plate, so it wasn't registered, and it had scrap lumber on it and other junk, and it was parked there. And Nate responded that he would check on it and get, you know, the, the correct letters sent. And then on Monday, September 13th, Nate emailed me and said the owners have until September 30th to comply with that letter, and that he had still not heard back from the attorney on where his letter stands. And he said he would try again that afternoon to get ahold of him. So, on Tuesday, September 28th, I sent an email asking how, how long 414 had to get rid of the nuisance vehicles. And I informed Nate that the tenants of 418, Fourth Avenue West had been evicted, and all of their belongings had been put out in the yard. And they sat there for probably a week and a half, but they finally did move the stuff, but some of the tenants moved the stuff to the driveway behind 414, adding to the problem that was already there.
And that there from 418, you said?
Yes. Yeah. So, they moved it there, and I'm not 100% sure, but some of it may have gone into the attached garage to that house, which none of those people have anything to do with. And I did see someone putting things in the camper that I've been trying to get rid of also. So, now it's just one problem is causing another problem. So, I asked if there was an ordinance against squatting, because again, I'm, I don't know for sure, but there is a chance that there's squatting in the camper, maybe even in the house, because what I've heard, the house is not locked. So, Nate said he would talk to the police chief about the squatting, and he would call Joe that afternoon and get an update on the letter he had sent in regards to the camper and the truck and the car months ago. And he said he'd get back to me. At the beginning of October, I stopped in here and actually talked to Nate regarding 414, at which time Nate said that he had heard back and that George Willis, who is selling the house on contract, was going to contact the police about searching it. But since he didn't technically own it, he had to get permission from the guy that's buying it, and they hadn't heard anything. And also, something about ownership might change, and so getting out of the current contract. So, I guess this, the city attorney advised the council to contact someone else about the nuisance vehicles if they wanted them gone sooner. So, I went through and looked at all the ordinances and, you know, definition of a nuisance, I think all of these things cover that. 50.2, number nine, outdoor storage, building materials, not part of an active building project, auto parts, miscellaneous, miscellaneous steel, plastic, all of that stuff is part of the trailer that's sitting there. That has not moved. And I, I mean, I, they did get the wheel put back on somehow, but, and then 50.2, number 16, is unoccupied buildings. Any buildings or portion of a building which is unsecured or abandoned and not maintain, maintained as if occupied, that would fall under 414, because nobody's been living there legally. And, you know, nothing, nothing's moved, more stuff has accumulated.
So, nobody, the people that are buying 414 on contract don't live there?
No. On and off, there will be people living in it, but for the past, probably at least six months, if not longer, there has not been anybody living there. The guy that owns it might come for a few hours, but then, I'm not sure what he's doing.
And these vehicles and trailers aren't his?
Well, the trailer is at 412, I'm sorry if I misspoke. Is that 412? 414 is where the car has been, and that has been there literally since 2018. The camper and the truck are together, and they're just pulled alongside a shed, and they have been there now over a year. I went back through my pictures, and they have not moved. The window is open on the truck, and like I said, the camper, now some of the blinds are pulled, and I've seen people putting stuff in there. So, chapter 51, junk and junk vehicles, you know, any vehicle which has not been moved in seven days or more, well.
That was the initial letter that I sent.
Right. So, Nate, where are we on this, from your point of view?
This is the letter that Joe had returned a response to, that I let you all read.
Okay.
This is the part that Owen and you got props to.
Basically, the problem is, keep me honest here, things just move really slowly. And it is moving.
And this is the response that Joe had, is that the nuisance letters are something that, he's not sure he wants to continue.
Right, that there might be conflicts. So, we're looking into working with another lawyer. And I understand that, and that's why I kept checking in and Nate.
And her frustration is just that's taking so long.
Yeah, and we all understand that. But, let's see here, it says 51.04, notice of violation. Notice shall be deemed given when mailed. If the notice is returned undelivered by the U.S. Post Office, a citation for the offense shall be issued not less than 10 days from the date of the return showing non-delivery, which we're well past that.
So, a citation from me or from Joe? Because I mean, I got it returned, but that letter was already at Joe's office for not responding.
Yeah, I'm not sure who, but that's just what it states. And I guess, like, my question is, letters were sent to 412 and 414 on May 20th. They had 55 days to comply. I think that's outrageous, that they have 55 days. I mean, that's the whole reason I went in April, so I'd have time to enjoy my own yard, which I can't do. And they had until July 14th, so for May 20th to July 14th. And I don't know, you know, who decides that. I did not find anything in the ordinances about, you know, how long people should have. But I do know, so that letter goes out, that if they don't comply, then they have X number of days again to do something about it. And then what happens is, you know, I don't go in my backyard during the winter, so then I don't bother anybody. But then in the spring, nothing has been done, and so it's just a vicious cycle that starts all over again.
But isn't part of the problem here that the house is for sale under contract?
I don't know if that's part of the problem. I mean, that's part of what they're working on at the moment.
Yeah.
Because he wants to do other things. He wants to get out of that.
Right. And I mean, this is something that, like I said, I, I had told Rod about, which was last year. And, you know, I, I understand the situation, you know, with health issues and whatever, and I, I can understand that, but I don't think it's fair to require the rest of the neighborhood to deal with that stuff, you know, because.
I, I think we all share your frustration, but equally have to say that there's frustration on the other side, that thing, I mean.
That nothing is being responded to as pertains to my letter that was sent.
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah, and like I said, I know you're doing what you need to do, but at what point, I mean, at what point do you say, okay, this isn't being handled, we have to?
We've begun that process now that Joe has clarified to us that he has some conflicts. So, I mean, as I say, we all share your frustration, probably all of us have a nuisance or something in, you know, close to where we live, that or that we drive by every day, and some of them just are tough to handle. What I would say is, we're really aware of it, and we're trying to make, make this happen.
Well, and, you know, that's why I wanted to come again, because like, I'm sort of at my breaking point. Like, if, if one more pile of junk gets brought in, I, I don't know what's going to happen. And already, things have been starting to reaccumulate in 412's yard, but, you know, I just, okay, just keep your eye on the prize, you know.
And somebody lives in that house, right?
Yes.
And they did respond to the first letter.
Yep. He did.
I went through and took pictures today. Has 412 got the pickup and the camper and one, two, three vehicles maybe?
No, that's 414.
That is, okay.
However, the truck there belongs to the person that lives at 412. So, he's not even parked on his own property. This part is from the evicted tenant.
This one here?
Correct. And.
Have a plate on it.
Yep, that's the one that's been there for four years, probably.
Okay.
Well.
It's on private property.
Right.
Yeah, we can't just tow off private. I, I think we all appreciate that this is an issue. David, if you and Angela like to go over the pictures, I think we can do that afterwards. Does anyone have any questions for Angela? So, we appreciate your attention to the matter and can only assure you that we're going to try to keep it moving forward.
Because I wanted, I wanted to over with as much as you do.
I know, because you probably, like, opened up your email.
No, no, not that, it's just like, it's been dragging on for a really long.
Right, right.
It has.
And so, so now that you know there's a conflict, what?
That's what we're looking into, if we have to go elsewhere or what we need to do from that front.
Okay.
So, so we can actually get something accomplished with the letter.
Now that Joe has notified us that, well, his situation and that.
Okay.
So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other?
He's not here, but I wanted to thank the chief police for putting a sign up. It did help, but now it's gone and we're back to 8 mile an hour. Well, not quite. It did help during that period. And then I wanted to ask Nate, were you going to, to sweep that street again?
We hadn't, we hadn't planned on it. I know you're the second one that has asked me that question now. That's something I can talk to Dean about, see if they do well.
We would, but it's, it's really needs it.
Sure.
Okay.
Because I know that was the street that was not able to be rolled after we.
Correct.
Put the chips down on it, so. Yeah, I'll talk to Dean about that.
Yeah.
Sure, thanks. Jason? I, I see that smile back there.
I just got a few things I was going to mention tonight. So, first of all, we are doing a fall staff appreciation. That's the end of the month here, the 27th. We're doing it in person or to go or delivery. So, if your business wants to thank your staff for what they do, let us know. We're using the cattisters again for that, so that's the 27th of October. We are moving forward with our chamber and CIDC banquet. You guys will be getting invitations from that. We set that up for a different night. That's going to be Friday night, November 19th. So, we are doing that out at the country club. We're going to kind of work with the hospital. They're doing an online auction at the same time, and so we won't be doing our own auction. This is a little bit of what Amy got to, what we talked about at CIDC. So, we won't be doing that. We're going to kind of steer everybody towards the hospital and what they're doing for online auction for the foundation. A couple of things coming up that I want to be back in front of you with. We've talked about housing, and housing and more housing, but we do have an applicant for the city of Cresco for our downtown housing grant program through the state of Iowa. I think I mentioned that before. I did clarify with the state office. So, I'll be back and just have a simple little resolution. The city has to be the applicant because it's a CDVG grant. If you guys are so willing to just be the pass through, if we get awarded such grant. But that would be for Dan Evans, and he's going to redo his upper story, so that they're scoring highly is things that might have been left vacant for years. And it's just for housing. So, really cool from the governor's office that they're doing this. I, I wish we could do a whole bunch down there. We can only do one project per city, so that's kind of the drawback. Dan was teed up, ready to go, and ready to start. His contractor was coming within two weeks, so that's kind of where I was at, like, okay, yeah, I could, we could do a whole bunch more, but you have plans, you have details, you're ready to go, let's try it. So, I had to push the pause button for him, because I'm like, hey, if we can get up to $100,000 in grant funding, would that help you? Obviously, their answer was yes. And I could do some really cool stuff up there. So, we'll try that. I think it's going to be a huge success. We'll put, put the good word into the state's office that maybe this would be a good one to duplicate. One of the other things that they threw money at for housing is a new, not the new, but the old workforce housing tax credit program. The governor threw over 20 million to try to clear up the line backed up on the workforce housing tax credit program. So, we have been in touch with developers, they've been kicking things around. So, a developer has to commit to doing three housing units with, no, four housing units within a three-year time period. And they can get their sales tax reimbursed by the state, and they also get a percentage of their investment back in tax credits for the state. So, if they pay taxes, they're great. If they don't, then they can sell them and get 90 cents of dollars. So, hopefully, those new monies that have been allocated for those programs will help a little bit here. I do have one gentleman that's looking at doing something for the housing tax credit program. And with the, with the downtown housing grant, we're not only going to apply for Howard County here in Cresco, but we're looking at Elma, and we're looking at Lime Springs. So, we'll, we'll take a shot. I don't know if we can get them all, but I'll take whatever they want to throw our way. So, beyond that, a couple of other events happening. We are moving forward with Santa's Parade this year, so that'll be the day after Black Friday. So, that's Saturday, the 20, or, it is on Black Friday, my bad. It's on Black Friday, the 26th, the day after Thanksgiving. It's on Black Friday, the twenty-sixth, uh, the day after Thanksgiving, like normal. So we are moving forward with the parade. We did not do it last year, but we are gonna do it this year. That was kind of unanimous to, uh, to bring that back out. So, um, so we'll be doing Santa's Parade. And Ready or Not, Jingle in Your Pocket is coming down the road here starting November fifth. So we'll be rolling that out. So a big thanks to our banks for sponsoring that again. And we'll be giving away four thousand dollars. That's all I got.
Anytime you announce giving away money, I'm sure people are paying attention.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anyone else? We'll get to the airport commission and stuff. Glad to see you guys here. Item number one, public hearing to amend the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Michelle, anything? I mean, it looked pretty straightforward.
Yeah, a lot of it is, um, projects that did not get finished last year. Got moved forward into this year. A few unexpected repairs.
Some people. But there was actually somehow. Without unexpected repairs.
Unfortunately. But we did have unexpected revenues too. We have a ERBA grant, some large donations that added to the budget.
Do we have a motion? Jan and Dave. Roll call? Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Number two is resolution approving the budget amendment number one for fiscal year. And the, whoops, oh, that was the public hearing. So, oh, wait a minute. So we did number one and now we've magically done number two.
We have to ask if there's any comments.
Oh, are there any comments on number one, the public hearing? My screw up, I'm sorry. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Now the resolution, which we did a bit out of order.
Yep.
And we approved that. So number three is the motion to award, this is what you get from mayor pro town. Motion to award hotel motel tax grants for tourism projects. Do we have a?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Do we want to say?
Oh, yeah, we probably should, yeah.
Prairie Springs Recreational Trail signage for four hundred dollars. The Kellow House, um, historical society is, um, doing some remodeling, I believe. The tourism committee recommended two thousand five hundred dollars and the Santa Parade requested one thousand dollars. And the committee recommended awarding the full thousand, so.
And we have money left over. People have been staying in the Motel.
Right. So the available funds were five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and funds requested were thirty-nine hundred, so.
Do you have a motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Rick and?
I'll second.
Alex. Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell? Item four, recommendation of the theater commission to appoint David Gosh to replace Lee Myers for term ending six thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Someone.
Second.
Uh, let's see, that was Jan and Alex. Roll call?
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Item five, recommendation of the airport commission to appoint Rick Sovereign to replace Neil Marr for a term ending six thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Someone.
Second.
Jan and Dave? Roll call?
Brenna?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Number six, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the Airport Runway Drainage Improvements Project.
So this is a grant for the hundred and thirty thousand dollar portion of the project to address the drainage issues. The grant from the Iowa Department of Transportation was eighty-five percent of the totals, so up to a hundred and ten thousand five hundred, which leaves our MASH that we have to commit to is twenty-nine thousand five hundred, which we do have enough in the airport trust at the moment. And just a reminder that we did get that ten thousand dollar donation specifically for runway repairs.
I'll second.
Okay, Rich and Alex? Roll call?
Carmen?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
You got a little pause there. Orders are. Number eight, discuss private hangar requests and requests for base. Number seven. I'm having a good night. Discuss airport land lease agreement.
So, um, we usually do a three-year farm lease, um, for the seventy-nine acres out of the airport. And so that lease is expiring now here, um, this fall. So we have, um, kind of rewritten it a little bit. And there's a couple of questions that we've wanted to make sure that council was in favor of changing. In the past, we've required twenty percent of the rent on March first and eighty percent on November first. Recommendation is to have more of it due on March first. You can do up to a hundred percent. Most farmers prefer a little bit better terms than that because they don't get their crops in until the fall. So, um, we can kind of do whatever percentage we want, but twenty percent just seemed a little low.
Isn't a half and half kind of a normal thing?
Isn't it, isn't it?
Okay.
They're starting to have problems with people skipping on that third year, not making their final payments. So our, the recommendation that came from us was, and I think that one of the attorneys said, you should go a hundred percent and you don't have to worry about it. Uh, the current guy that's leasing it, he had no problem with. He says, yeah, it makes sense. He says he's had other ones say the same thing.
And on March first, then a hundred percent on March first is what you guys were recommending?
An attorney did say he's doing more and more like that, so.
Okay.
Just four letters.
We ended up with some shady renters at times, saying, well, we, we haven't, but.
It happens.
Everybody else does. And that's one way they've been getting around. They had a front, man.
Okay. Okay with a hundred percent? What, what is the current land rent up there?
Say what again?
Seventeen thousand three eighty.
The per acre land rent?
Oh, it's like, geez, I didn't bring that book, like two twenty or something like that, two forty. Remember? Somewhere's in that area.
Yeah.
It'll be higher than your crops, they're significantly higher price, so.
And then the other thing that we added to this year's or this upcoming lease would be section twenty-six, um, just making sure that, um, they're following the crop rotation and taking care of the soil. And also spelled out, you know, that you can't plant anything taller than four feet within a hundred feet of.
The runway.
Runways, so. Just making sure council is kind of okay with the, those are about the only two revisions that we made.
One, um, one thing I, I need us to think about, we can't, I don't even, we can't do it for this coming contract. But the guy that's been renting it, he says it'd be nice if we could move everything up. So by the first of October, they would know if they got it for the next three years. For the simple reason, he says he don't wanna waste his money on cover crops, trying to save all of his nitrogen and everything. He said, if we can move it up, move the whole process up. So by the first of October, he would know, then he can go out there and put cover crop in.
Okay. I mean, we could actually do it earlier. So, so if we're ready for this, we'll get it in the paper this week and then.
Well, it's getting late now.
Yeah.
It's getting late for this three-year site.
So you're saying next time try to do it like, so he can buy the crops on.
Yeah.
But still, don't we wanna get this in?
I don't, but any, or anywhere's, now that I know him, is there? Where, where you release it for bidding?
I'm sorry.
Is there any article in here that states what date we set it out for bid? Yeah.
She's talking about the next round.
I know, but aren't we ready to send this to the paper for?
This one, yeah.
The three-year?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'll go ahead and get that in the paper this week. Cause like about a two-week turnaround. Get the bid submitted and then at your next commission meeting, you can review.
Yeah.
How many people typically would have bid in?
Now, one year we had thirteen bids.
Oh, really?
But then other years we've had one or two, so.
I think last, this last contract we had, Mark was going that way.
Oh.
And we just, this was Brian. He gave us a state average, whatever it was, two twenty-four acres, something like that. We were happy with that. He kind of got burned a year before.
All right. Go through safety back then, okay? Okay, I think we're turning the page. Item number eight, discuss private hangar requests and requests for basal operations for aerial spraying. Who wants to lead this one?
We keep getting it at our meeting. If we won't build hangars for potential new customers, could they build them themselves? And the answer's always been no so far, for coming from here. And I guess they're asking for more of an understanding is, does it really make sense? If I, if I build a forty thousand dollar hangar to put my plane in, what do we gotta have for rent and things like that, so.
I was wondering if we wanted to form a committee, maybe a couple, um, council members and a couple airport commission members to kind of come up with some specs or some.
Well, yeah.
Comparisons?
We've tried in our meetings, coming up with specs, but we get so far off base, it ain't even funny, so.
We need some help?
We can't, we can't.
Bring the gavel.
We can't, we can't keep it on track, cause everybody, somebody wants this type of door, somebody wants that type of door.
Yeah, the same type of building.
So what you're talking about would be a particular person or business would build a building that only they would use?
Yeah.
Correct.
And then basically releasing them the land underneath it.
Basically, yeah.
And then the building?
Yeah.
Who owns the building after a while?
Twenty-five or thirty-year leases.
Is that what they do?
Yeah. Now, talking to Wayne Mas from the aerial guys out of, uh, Fredericksburg, he says what they've done, and I can't remember which airport it was. He says they put up a pretty substantial sized building.
Osage.
But Parker, their building went to Parkersburg right now.
Yeah, but they got another airport that they do a base on it too. And he says, we got a pretty substantial sized building. He says, we built the building, he says, we got close to three or four hundred thousand. I couldn't quite remember into the whole process. It's huge. He says, uh, we pay the tax on the building every year, it's like we own it. But then we also pay a substantial amount of money to the airport commission for the ground underneath and whatnot else, right? So all that. He says, what they like to do is, they don't wanna do it on a monthly basis. They just wanna do it on a once a year. This is what we're gonna owe you. It's kind of prorated as the years go on. And at the end of twenty years, twenty-five years, you guys own the business, you guys own the hangar. But.
That's kind of what they've done in Osage and Parkersburg then, you think?
I, I can't, I can't speak to them.
Okay.
This is just what Wayne Mas told me he done. And it wasn't in any one of these three airports. It was in a different one, I can't remember which one it was. But they're, they're suffering from COVID down there. They're all just starting to come out of it and so.
And we have plenty of room out there for stuff like that, right?
What he's talking about, you know, and this, like I said, this is all talk. He wants to go across from where Lynn Johnson is, take maybe three, four acres, go on the south side of the, uh, the taxiway that we got there and build himself a road around down to by the Don Pond or wherever it is, you know, down that side. So he has his own road to get up there with his seeds and whatnot else. Probably want a tunnel underneath, get some water over there and power it without anything else. He needs to make his single work up top. They're still putting it together, getting estimates. Most of it, if not all of it, he says, is gonna be done by local contractors. Some reason he uses the local contractors in every pla, every place he goes. He's gone down Parkersburg right now. He had it over in Osage. So he knows the work them people do, so.
Right.
But now we haven't heard nothing back yet as far as what's it all about all. It's been so far as safe, here's safe. Now, would it be operational next summer? Probably not unless it really happens fast. Yeah.
So I really like Michelle's suggestion. Do we have any volunteers?
Yeah, I would be.
I'll volunteer, but, cause Alex and Jan volunteer. Yeah, okay. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Anything else on item eight? We'll go to item nine, motion to post recorded council meetings on YouTube or other social media sites. This is because, you know, as cable has declined and people have cut the cord, right now it's on MediaCom, Channel Three, and that's, a lot of people don't have that anymore.
Right, and Decor does theirs on YouTube. I haven't seen anybody else that does, but, um, they have a spot on their website and then they throw a YouTube channel. I don't know if you have to pay a subscription for something like that?
I have, I have a YouTube channel and it's a.
You do?
Just, well, sorry, the energy district does. You just, you just, my, my building from there, did you notice that? You know, and that is a nonprofit. I can't imagine that there's a, somebody's social media literate out there?
Usually it's based off of how much, uh, storage you're using. And then at a certain point, then you're paying a fee for that storage, for the cloud or whatever. But for a nonprofit, they may have programs out for that, so.
I'm glad you're young.
So would you foresee leaving, like, keep accumulating them? Or did you delete older ones after a certain period of time?
It's nice to have a record, a formal record that you can go back and watch. But it would all be up to.
See with the storage.
And Decor hasn't been doing it, I don't think, that long, but I, maybe a year or two. I think they're all on that, I think.
And like YouTube over anything else, cause not everyone Facebooks YouTube. You don't have to have an account to watch. And it's linkable, so.
Is it something, um, Wendy or somebody could look into it now?
Yeah. Cause you could actually embed it into the website as well, so that they don't even have to travel over to YouTube. You can just click on it and watch it and that's it.
And I guess the biggest thing would be the sound quality. I think in Decor, they all have microphones, but I'd have to go back and look again. I know when the people come up to speak, I believe they have a microphone.
So we might have to look in the, when I watch, when I take this card and I watch it on my computer, we can hear pretty good.
Pretty good.
But through, by the time it gets through the MediaCom and the sound kind of seems worse. So we'll have to just kind of play with it and see.
Take tonight's and just start the YouTube channel. It doesn't have to be a public one right away, but at least you, at least you could see how it's working.
So do you have a motion to?
I would make a motion to do that, second.
Okay, Dave and Rich, roll call? Okay, Dave and Rich, roll call.
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
The other thing is when we have people speak with us, maybe a little bit so that people in the audience can see who's talking to us at the podium too.
And I think if we pull the podium out, I think you can get it on there, can't you?
Yeah.
Okay. So we might just have to be better at making people come to the podium, so, okay.
Number 10, motion to approve revision to utility billing penalty calculation policy and procedures.
It was so straightforward. We only want to change, I highlighted, so I hope it didn't draw on yours. The very last paragraph. A lot of people are going to Community Action to get help with their water bills, but the problem is with any government agency, it takes a long time to actually get the money. So what this would do is allow us, once we hear from Community Action that yes, they have approved it, it's in their system, that we would not charge them the 10% penalty then because they can't get us the check by the 12th, by our deadline. So we don't normally forgive the penalty for anything, but we thought for Community Action, if we have the authorization, that we would waive it on that. That's what we're asking.
Sounds fine with me.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
I'll second it. Sorry. Brenna?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes. And just for people who are watching, just to clarify, this is a companion program to LIHEEP. LIHEEP is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. It helps with your heating bills. This is the Low Income Home Water Assistance Program or something like that, that helps with your water bills. It's not forever like LIHEEP. I think it's only funded through 2023. But if you are having trouble with your water bills, please talk to Community Action. And as we go into the heating season, please talk to Community Action if you're having any trouble heating your house. There is help out there.
But you don't have to go through Community Action to apply for that, though, do you? I don't think you do. You can go right to the state if you want to do it yourself, right?
We have to fill out forms and take them over.
But they're just assisting them on that end, right? Because it's through a state program.
But yes, this, they, the city has to fill out the information for them.
Okay. Community Action is just a link to help them finish out, okay.
Number 11, discuss theater furnace quotes.
So we had budgeted for four furnaces and an air conditioner and then moving another furnace. So the theater commission received three quotes for that project. And at their commission meeting, they approved the lowest one, which was Gosh's for $15,861. We had budgeted $22,900, so it came in quite a bit under budget. So Cresco Heating had actually put an option in there. The furnace that we were going to move, he suggested that maybe we wanted to upgrade it, so he had included an option for a new furnace for that, which was only $2,700. So I reached out and asked Gosh's what their, if they were recommend replacing that furnace number one. Number two, what would their estimate or their quote be for a new furnace? And he submitted $2,421. I guess Theater Commission kind of on my suggestion was that since they have room in their budget, that maybe we should replace that furnace instead of moving it. It's a 2009 furnace that's already been moved twice before, so this would be a third time it's moved. And anytime, kind of like a freezer, anytime you move them, there's a potential of problems.
Plus you get more efficiency.
And plus it would be more efficient. With more often than not. So Rich actually asked the good question that didn't come in till late this afternoon, or I didn't see it till late this afternoon, about possibly using one of those furnaces that we bought at the fitness center. It's a good idea. So I tried to pull the two quotes out, and I can't tell if they're comparable, so I have to ask more intelligent people to see if it would be compatible. And then I also have to double check to see if they're being used at the fitness center.
They reached out. Brandon, and they were being used.
Oh, they are.
I brought it up at the theater commission meeting. I'm, I'm assuming that it's the HVAC that's in the old gym.
They're using the furnaces we took out and replaced, and replaced them with them?
The three furnaces that we had, that we, we bought in the emergency.
Right.
They're using that in the gym somewhere. That's what Brandon's response was when, when he was asked about it.
Well, let me check into it more. If, if they're being used, that's fine, or if they need them over there. But if they, there is a spare one, we'll see if it would be compatible. If it's not, then I thought maybe if we wanted to make a motion to go ahead and accept the lower quote from Gosh's and upgrade that at the same time, so that at least we're putting a newer furnace in.
So. So second? Okay, I'm seconding. Janice? Roll call.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
And that's if the other ones won't work.
Right. I'll check that first. And then the prices go up November 1st, so that's why I'm not waiting for the theater commission meeting again. But we will, in the next day or two, figure out if they could work from the fitness center. If not, we'll get this one ordered.
We probably wouldn't have enough anyway. We'd have one we could use, because I, I figured also if they weren't used, I remember the library was asking for one too.
I know, I know, the library is forever.
We have three of them, so.
So I. And even if they're just being used until we get the new system, then they might be available in a few years, but.
I, I think that, I mean, we've got furnaces kind of all over and they're failing and they're new and stuff like that. I really think that, that we need to do a furnace and air conditioning inventory and have a plan, which ones can be replaced by heat pumps reasonably, you know, should some of them be combined? And Michelle and I have been talking about it, because otherwise we come up and they just fail and we go, oh, my gosh.
At least buy a new one, we could have probably buy a bigger unit to cover.
Yeah.